So, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of July 10, 2018. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, everyone. I hope everyone is surviving with the heat. As a reminder, we have town hall open for a cooling session from 10 to 4:00. And then often many evenings when we know there'll be a meeting here, we will begin tonight's meeting as we always do, provided technology cooperates with the agenda. If you'd be kind enough to pan to the screen, Julia, so the folks at home can see what we will be discussing tonight at our town board meeting. Okay, this is very good. So, we begin every first meeting of the month with the supervisor's report, and provided technology cooperates, and it looks like it might. This is the report for the month of June, ending on June 30. And we started the month with an opening balance of $6,391,209. We had receipts of $949,000 and change, and a dispersment of a million and a half. Most of those changes were going from a master account to our other accounts. It leaves us with an ending balance of $5,773,377.10. Harry, for your knowledge, I know you want to hear about CTF. So the check we received in June for the month of May was for $26,435. And as it turns out, it always comes in the night of our first board meeting, it seems. So this month's check was for a little under $18,000. So we seem to be tracking pretty nicely so far in 2018. The ending balance for that community preservation fund now stands at... My password already... Is...
Little over $9,000, I guess.
Yep, it is. There it is, Bank of Green County. My apologies, it's this figure here. If you look at my cursor, it's $1,070,278. And that does not include that almost $18,000 that just came in this month.
So it's almost 1.2.
All right, we have also a few budget adjustments prepared by our bookkeeper, Ann Tanway. And just a few... A couple of fairly low budget numbers. One is, we did finally receive the truck that we ordered from last year, and there was just a small portion of that, $9,200 related to that piece of equipment. We also have increased on the budget line refuse. The amount of money that we are spending now on our recycling and pickup from the hauler, they will no longer do it for the amount that we had previously. So we've had to make that budget adjustment. And something we should consider, you know, various options as we look towards 2019, if we want to continue with this vendor, if we want to get into the garbage business or the recycling business on our own. That's food for thought there. You have your variance reports for half of the year up to, including June 30. And do you have any questions about any of that information? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the supervisor's report. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the same for the budget adjustments?
Are we doing it as separate?
Yeah.
So, um, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so, we will launch right into our first item on the agenda is...
We have a town court report.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Sue. You see, you and I were hoping for a short meeting, and I'm just gonna skip over half the stuff, aren't I?
I'll be as quick as I can, although I do have two extras.
You have a bunch of extras. Go for it, thank you, Sue.
Town court month report for June 2018. Total local shares remitted to supervisors, town revenue, $1,366.86. Amount remitted to New York State for the Spain and Newton program, $55. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $180. And the amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $271.14, for a total state, county, and local revenue of $1,873. And this is pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law. I hereby certify that the following is a full and true statement of all fees and lines received by the Sumicay County Court during the period stated above in connection with my office.
Okay, very good.
And we have a March 2018. These are vouchers 23140 through 23253. And the total abstract is $882,509.48. I hereby certify that the vouchers number 23140 through 23253 processed in the month of March are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board. The next abstract is for April of 2018. Voucher numbers 23140 through 23253, for a total abstract of $173,046.16. And I certify that the vouchers numbered stated above, processed in the month of April, are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board. And these are always on file in my office and in the manifolds. If anybody wants a copy, they're welcome to have that. That's it.
Very good, thank you very much, Sue. I do have a few announcements. I think I'll keep them to the end of the meeting if we could. We have someone here doing a presentation for us with regard to a grant application who needs to make a long drive afterwards. So, without further ado, I'll just very quickly tell you that Joel Herne was before us, what, about a year and a half ago?
About a year.
Perhaps, something like that.
Correct.
Talking about micro hydro and potential sites and possibilities within our community. And in concert with that, we also had some flood risk assessment grants and analyses done for our community. And so now we'll be talking about a grant application that maybe combines those two initiatives. So, thank you very much for being here. And I will pass the baton over to you. I think we have a few slides. There we go.
Great. Okay. I'm Joel Herne, and like Robert said, I'm working with Bard and NYSERDA to see if we as a society can do more micro hydro in order to get more clean energy onto the grid, plus make use of either abandoned dams or dams that aren't really being used for green energy now. So that's kind of the focus that NYSERDA wanted us to look at and figure out. And also separately, the DEC has been quite active in the estuary program, with their estuary program trying to revitalize and restore tributaries into the Hudson River and the Hudson River itself. And as you probably know, Fussen O'Neill did a full flood study of the whole Sawkill as it went its way through Red Hook. And especially with a focus on looking at what happened during Irene and a week after Irene, I think it was Lee. And so, the Fussen O'Neill report looked at the Cooper's Dam, which you can see here in this drone image that my little company took. And what happened during Lee was a lot of water was coming down from the upper headwaters of the Sawkill. And, you know, the whole pond started going up. And the spillway, which is about four feet high, was well flooded. And then the waters kept rising and actually went around the Cooper's house and made their house basically an island. And then a couple hours after that, the water on the other side of Mill Road came over Mill Road and started washing down in this area south of their house. So, we've also gotten information from other property owners on the Mill Road pond that they fairly consistently, maybe every year, maybe every two years, get flooding in their basements. So the idea was, and the Fussen O'Neill suggestion was to basically take out the dam so that when we did have a flood event, there wouldn't be this constriction here so that Daniel Cooper's house, or the Daniel Franka Cooper's house wouldn't get, be an island anymore and there'd be less flooding on the other property owners. The problem with that, though, is the bridge on Mill Road, which you can't really see in this image, is more constrictive than the dam actually. And so that's what caused the water to get stopped up by the bridge aperture and come around and cause more flooding. So, if we did take out the dam for flood mitigation, that might, that would probably help certainly cause less flooding. But all the people that really love that pond aren't going to be so happy. So, the approach that I'm taking with micro hydro, which is to take a very light touch approach to all these projects. In other words, I don't want to go in with big excavators and do a lot of big civil work to put in a small little hydro system because the finances just won't work out if you spend a lot of money. So you have to be kind of clever or kind of work with what you have. So, the problem is, nobody wants the pond to go away, but no one wants to be flooded either. So what can we do? So maybe if you go to the next slide? So our idea is to kind of do a three-in-one civil project, which isn't going to cost a lot of money to build. So the idea is to basically create an aperture just as big as the dam spillway with a passive flood channel. So we would sculpt this land, crucially, right at the entrance to this flood channel, that you can see in white here, so that it might be probably about six inches above normal pond height so that when the waters come up, the water, excess water will go down this channel instead of building up here on the dam. So keeping the flood levels down for not only the Cooper's house, but all the properties on the pond itself. So that's... And that's what we're going for the grant for, is to find out exactly what level to put that flood channel at, along with calculating very precisely what year of flood this whole design will handle. Is it a five-year flood that we can handle with this design? Or is it 10 or 25? Hopefully, you know, the more the better. So, it probably wouldn't make sense to spend all the money just to put in the flood mitigation. So we've come up with a way to have this channel be the, follow the same path as a penstock to run on a small turbine so that we're kind of getting a two-for-one deal on the civil work. And then the other thing that is really, really important for the Sawkill watershed community, as well as the DEC, and as well as me frankly, is to make sure that American eel migration is not only prevented, but enhanced. The interesting thing is, what I found on my dam down in Rhinebeck, eels are already getting past here. They will kind of wiggle up over land when it's really wet and get over the Cooper's 12-foot dam. But not by going over the dam, but going around on the ground when it's wet. So, and this was verified earlier this spring when we did a full multidisciplinary site assessment. We had a hydro engineer, civil engineer, Hudsonia, and a couple of Bard water quality scientists looking at this whole site, trying to do a two-day assessment of can we do hydro here? Or are there any gotchas as to, you know, should we take the dam out? Can we put in hydro? And they all came back and said, this is a valid site for hydro. They didn't see any, no no's came up for hydro. But while we were talking about it, this idea of doing a passive flood channel with an active low-level outlet came up as a way to kind of help with flood mitigation at the same time we do hydro. Does that make any sense? So, if you go to the next slide, I'll show you a cross-section of what this channel will look like. And the really interesting thing about the whole design, so we're doing a passive flood channel, we will make sure there's always enough water during eel migration system for them to, instead of going over the grass, they'll have more of a riverine environment to wiggle up. These will be riprap lining this channel. And you can see here, you know, there's a pretty good volume of water that we can handle, much like the dam spillway aperture. But this is where the penstock would be. But we can also use that same pipe to drain the pond in advance of a major flood event. A good friend of mine is a computer scientist with Climate Corporation, and they've gotten really, really good at predicting when flash flooding will occur on small rivers. So imagine if we know that in six hours, there's going to be a major flood event with maybe increase of three to four feet in elevation on the Sawkill. We can start draining the pond to act as a buffer before that flash flood starts moving down the Sawkill.
Would that be enough to protect the rec park?
Sorry?
Would that be enough to protect the rec park from the flood like we had?
Well, that's a big reason why we're going for $50,000 in grant money to really, not overthink, but think a lot about the downstream effects of this whole scheme as well. So we don't want to just rush into anything. And that's why this particular grant is really interesting for all of us because they don't want to give us money to build something. They want to give us money to figure out and make sure that what does get built is the right thing to build. So, and then the next...
You do know that there was a study just done a few months ago?
By Fussen O'Neill?
Yeah, right.
I've read.
That's what he's wrote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And they said, take the dam out. Which, you know, from a hydrologist silo? It was obviously, I mean, I respect them, they're good engineers. But I think what I've been finding in becoming a hydro developer kind of accidentally is that you can't just look at one part of the river. You've got to look at everything in context, you know, context. Property owners, the eels, green energy, et cetera, et cetera. Kind of look and feel. I mean, you know, we've suggesting that, you know, the flood channel be made to look like kind of a dry stream bed most of the time. So it's not going to be like a big open ditch or a concrete spillway. So, yeah, the last slide then kind of shows you in perspective where this would be. So we're not talking a big monumental civil work. It's, this is probably, I don't know, probably 200 yards, something like that. But you can see it, put yourself in the place of an eel going up this grade that's probably about five degrees uphill is a lot easier than trying to get over this thing. So that's what we're proposing, that the board feels comfortable enough to ask the state to give us $50,000 to figure this out.
Do you think that would be helpful, some of the flooding we tend to get down toward 9G? And through, down on Raspin Wall is flooded, whatever.
Well, the Fussen O'Neill...
Making the flow more consistent.
More consistent flow is a better thing for everybody, for sure. And the 9G bridge is definitely a major constriction on the Sawkill. And the Fussen O'Neill study said, yeah, let's widen and raise 9G. And I think they put some, and that's a state road, right?
Yeah, yes.
So that number was around 20 million.
Yeah, I'm aware.
Yeah. So...
There's two bridges on Astrid Mall Road in one particular that blocks the water flow there.
Right. So, I mean, just so you know, this is, this scheme, if you can call it a scheme, won't handle an Irene. But it's going to make a difference. And even if 9G was raised and widened, it's still not going to, we're still going to have these major flood events and they're going to be flashier with climate change. So we can, I think we should do what we can do with, you know, limited resources. One mechanical part of this particular grant is it's required 15% matching funds. So my little company will do the 15% essentially. So you guys, it's like free money to you. But you have to agree to be the applicant because it has to be a municipality or a nonprofit to be the applicant for the DEC month.
And you had mentioned, Joel, that, was it Chezen? Chezen Engineers who did a rudimentary calculation that actually...
They did.
On the pond, running the pond.
We took, they did, and, but they basically said, we need to study it further to give us an accurate number as to how wide that flood channel should be and how deep, and et cetera, et cetera. So...
Even if we drained the pond, it wouldn't be a total fix.
Sorry?
Even if we drained the pond, it wouldn't?
There are no total fixes here.
No such thing, yeah.
But I think it will certainly benefit the community to some noticeable degree. And of course, being a hydro developer, I'm most excited about being able to kind of co-locate with flood mitigation and eel migration work because, you know, every turbine generator that I put in, I want running 100 years from now, making clean energy. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. But like I said before, what's interesting to me about small hydro is, and I'm a designer by training, so just seeing this full context and seeing how all the different parts interact in a positive way is what's really exciting to me.
How many have you put in?
Zero, I'll be very candid.
Okay, but you have one of your own, maybe.
Well, I'm starting to build it. But, I mean, I am on a learning curve, and I have been for the last six years since I bought the property in Rhinebeck, which was, my dam was originally used to power Wilderstein in 1889. And interestingly, talking to the archivists there at Wilderstein, they were charging up their electric cars at Wilderstein in 1901.
Wow.
So what goes around, comes around. But the engineer that I use has been doing hydro for 40 years, Norm Bishop. He's with Knight Peasel Colorado. And he's worked on really small systems like we're talking about here. So he's my go-to guy for, and he's put in, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of dams through his company has. And, you know, from the biggest, his company was the major contractor on the Three Quarters in China, down to a couple of small little hydro sites up in Vermont, actually, that he did, I think, 20 years ago. But I'm excited about doing the first one. And the Cooper site could be the first one. But we are probably going to do Anandale first. It's been greenlighted by NYSERDA and the Bard Board. And that's slated to be start construction probably about a year from now with commissioning the fall of 2019.
It's going to be fun to watch.
It's going to be fun to watch.
Do we still have to do zoning laws or that?
No, as it turns out, one of the things that they discovered in their grant-funded, you know, exploration is that actually FERC has regulatory authority over it. But we will be doing zoning because we wanted to have zoning relative to it. But in that case...
Right.
FERC came in and said, no, we're the, the federal agency came in and said, we're the ones who will regulate.
Exactly. But with the FERC process, of course, you have to apply. And during that application period, it goes on the federal register and anyone on the planet can put in their objections. So if you want to object to micro hydro, that would be your big opportunity to tell FERC, no way in our backyard. And that has happened. And so it's really on me as the developer to think through all these issues so that we all agree that this is a good thing to do. Not that it's going to solve world peace or anything, but it's going in the right direction for clean energy and in this case, flood mitigation and eel migration.
What was the parcel that would actually be affected there?
Sorry?
Who owns that land that would be affected by the channel?
Same people in the town, so you can remember.
Is it the same people who owned that, the house we're talking about? Or is it-
Yeah.
The people who, no, the people who went on the property where the channel would be dug.
But this is all Cooper land, so they own both sides of the river, which is really, really great for putting in a hydro system. Like in my case, I only own half the river, so actually, my neighbor Jonathan Mensch agrees with hydro. And so we had to do a fifty-year easement and now I can use the site to make electricity.
Very exciting. What I started to ask you before was related to the amount of time it would take to actually drain the pond. And apparently, it's a number of hours, and I guess that's what the grant research will show is just how many hours. But I'm fascinated that it can drain that quick, right?
Yeah, my pond is probably, I'm going to say about this big. And my pen stock is twenty inches in diameter, and I can drain mine in about two and a half hours.
Well, you won't be able to drain this with the pen stock completely, or just lower it?
Well, that's what we're going to find out in the study, is to know how, exactly how big that pen stock needs to be or that low-level outlet needs to be.
Or exactly where it's to be located, I guess, in relation to low water.
Right. A good friend of mine runs a two-megawatt system down in Wapuja Falls. And, you know, his pen stocks are, he's got two of them, but the biggest one is ten feet in diameter. So, and that's the kind of beauty of this design is if we do need to oversize the pen stock or the low-level outlet, if you will, or the pipe, we won't see it, it'll all be underground. We'll just see this nice riverine environment, you know, with native plants and trees going on either side of the embankment. So you won't see how big it is. And so that's partly what the study will pay for, is figuring out exactly how big that pipe will be so that we can drain it to have an effective buffering system with the pond. One thing that the Coopers said that they don't want to have happen is to drain the pond like a day in advance or two days in advance because it did happen, I don't know what happened, but the pond went down. And there was kind of an awful smell with all the methane and what have you.
Sure.
So we want to be able to time that precisely so we don't, you know, have any untoward effects by the pond draining. And we also put in some money in this budget, and this is basically where the copay, not the copay, but the matching funds will come. My career is, I'm a software developer. So we'll be doing software design and building and doing actual dry runs, if you will. With real-time climate corporation data with monitors of exactly what, how much flow is going through the Cooper Dam. So that we can make sure that our software that will run all this by opening valves and gates and what have you will actually work in reality.
Sorry?
Like, you know, playing aside the study for a minute. I'm wondering, like, who decides when a pond like that would be drained? Is it a private pond?
It is, you know, that's the, it's interesting. The dam is privately owned, so one of the nice things about this project is we have a dam owner who has been struggling for the last couple of years to come to the determination that they want to keep the dam because it's inexpensive for them to maintain it.
Yes.
And it potentially leads to the greatest amount of flood damage happening to them and their property. And so this, at least in my mind, is a nice compromise where we can get some flood mitigation. And they can get some justification for perhaps keeping the dam. But it's a good question because the property underneath the water is owned by several landowners, I believe, right?
About sixteen.
About sixteen landowners, right? Oh, yeah, that's, that's a good question, so.
Well-
The determination about when to-
Well, we did put in money in this fifty thousand dollars to answer that particular question. You know, what permitting are we going to need to drain the pond in advance? I mean, can, I mean, it's certainly a public good as opposed to just a private good for the Coopers.
Right.
So it does, I mean, I'm not, I don't know the legality of municipal law, but it just seems like, I mean, do we need to get all the property owners to agree that it's okay to drain the pond? I don't know.
Right.
Well, I'm also thinking of like downstream too, like, I don't know. I mean, part of the study is supposed to probably answer the question of what happens if you drain the pond and it all goes downstream. But certainly, that's also a consideration, right? Is the timing of that related to whatever else is downstream?
I mean, right, well, the, I mean, this isn't going to stop the water-
Sure.
-at all, so, I mean, the people downstream are going to see the same-
They're going to have it either way, but-
They're going to have it either way, and so we want to be thoughtful about them, of course. And so this whole system is all about slowing things up and-
Buying time.
Buying time and evening out the-
Mitigating.
Flash-
To me, the pen stock would really have the effect of controlling the amount of flow downstream and limiting it so that they're likely to have, to be safe from some of the flooding they've had in the past.
Perhaps.
Or safer.
Safe.
Safer.
If we don't want to overbuild, because then we might be disappointed.
There is, there is a point where this is, you know, you don't have to have the Three Gorges Dam upstream.
Yeah, which, you know, that's more than twenty million dollars, so. But we kind of know, I mean, we've already had an experiment with Lee. So we should probably find out exactly what happened downstream during Lee. We know what happened at the Coopers in detail. But, yeah, we should probably find out, you know, what was their experience with that amount of water coming down that fast? I mean, what sort of damage did they incur? And can our strategy here help alleviate that as well?
Well, as it turns out, it's public land, that's immediately south of the, it's our rec park.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, we do know what transpired during those two storms. And I think in this area, it was actually Lee that was the final K O, if you will.
So what happened to the park?
Fields got all flooded and, and, you know, we had to do a lot of repair work associated with it.
There was a lot of damage, a lot of things were washed out.
Underwater.
It came, the water came over it like a sheet of water that was, that was like a hundred yards wide. And it just washed all sorts of stuff.
So it did come down as a flash flood?
Down as a flash flood. And the lower part of the, of the Sauk Hill, as you got down through Linden Acres and whatever, it wasn't, it was, it was over the banks. And there were a few places where it flooded, but it didn't do the same, anything like it did in the park.
Interesting.
Well, the constriction, I mean, it would sort of make sense, right? I'm not an engineer, I'm not even close to understanding all this, but I imagine the constricted-
Yeah.
Constriction of the dam would probably accelerate, you know, the overflow, so.
Yeah, it kind of channels, focuses it like a water hose, right?
The Linden Avenue Bridge is, the bridge was much smaller than it is now, it's since rebuilt it. So, so there would be much more of a flow go through there than there was then. So that probably slowed it down in the, in that flood. I'm sure it did, it was there.
What do you think?
So, we need to approve this grant application. It's almost finished, right? We're getting another slide, do a couple of little tweaks. It's due tomorrow, nothing like last minute, Joel.
Sorry.
No, it's not your fault, you don't make the deadlines, but, so we do have a resolution here. It would be resolution number-
Forty.
Forty. Date of July tenth, authorizing an application for Hudson River Estuary Program Watership Study Grant for Microhydro and Flood Mitigation Feasibility Study of Mill Road Dam. And I think we've articulated the reasons to have this study conducted and referenced one of our two flood mitigation studies that we conducted over the last couple of years, the Fussamunil one. And the public benefits, which include our habitat. We had some work done two and three years ago on identifying habitats. And also clean energy and flood mitigation. I guess we didn't really talk about, you know, the fourth thing, which is, you know, obvious, which is a really viable alternative for our community to removing the dam completely, which is, you know, something that's within the ability of the private dam owner.
Sure.
So I would move this resolution number forty. Will it be your second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion or questions? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Hi.
You're right. Joel, thank you very much, this is all very interesting and very exciting.
Thanks for the red hot.
Yeah, well, great, well, good luck, we'll keep our fingers crossed and, you know, we'll let the science guide us as always.
Okay.
Thanks, Joel, appreciate it very much.
See you, guys.
See you.
Okay, we are moving back to agenda number two. At our last meeting, we discussed that we were, this meeting, going to call a public hearing for our next meeting, July twenty-fifth, for the extension on a moratorium to draft, so that we can draft regulations, revise regulations surrounding large-scale extractions. And so we have from our attorney a prepared resolution. Also a prepared draft of local law D of the year twenty eighteen. It's a local law to enact a six-month extension as we determined last meeting. And we have also, one of the things that we discussed is at this meeting, to at least begin the conversation about our thoughts on the recommendations from that extraction working group. And then on the July twenty-fifth meeting, if we could, at least begin to give some guidance and some, you know, to authorize the beginning drafting of those revised regulations to the working group along with our consultant Ted Fink. And so I wondered, did you all have a chance between last meeting and now, or actually two meetings ago and now, to take a look at some of those recommendations? And did you have any thoughts about them? Or some questions related to it? We could start with number one, non-collection of spring waters and water withdrawal operations for sale or other than on-premise. So they talk about how the current code in certain districts, what's allowed. And essentially, the use is restricted to a single parcel of five acre minimum size on a state or county highway. Property line setbacks and screening, and so, and no onsite retail sale in the residential D three district. A hydro, hydrogeologic report assessing impacts of the proposed development on the quality and quantity of groundwater resources required with special permit application. So the recommendations are either to option one, develop definitions of what large-scale and small-scale water collection and withdrawal might look like. Thresholds based upon the actual secondary use impact, so traffic with the trucking and so on and so forth. Do we want to prohibit large-scale water harvesting and sale of that resource?
Yes, but we need to define it.
Okay. So you're in favor of prohibiting large scale?
Yes.
Provided you often agree with that means, okay? So for small scale, continue to allow a special permit use in R D three, L I and A B D and limit the amount of the traffic impacts. Approved vehicle routes, hours of operation, that all makes sense. Require applicants to be in compliance with relevant state permitting and reporting requirements, I know that was an issue. Require a submission on an annual basis to the town of all those reports. And the planning board may require applicants to submit reports addressing impacts to water courses, wetlands and groundwater resources. So option one would be prohibit large and keep the small. Option two is prohibit the collection, withdrawal of water for off-site commercial sale in all districts. Require existing uses to come forward within six months for a special use permit for a non-conforming use. So anything that was currently in operation, I think there's one. And allow expansion up to something like ten percent, that's the recommendation. For permitted non-conforming uses, limit the available traffic, approved routes, hours of operation. Same requirements as in option one. So option two is to prohibit any new operations and to essentially grandfather existing operations. And they have an and here, which is require notification of C A C for special permit applications. And to develop comprehensive water protection code to include maintaining water supply for both human use and ecological health, flood protection, improving protecting water quality. And I think they spoke about their ability to include that in, or lack of ability to include that in this particular effort.
Right, that would be a future-
That would be something that we-
If the town board wanted.
Right, right.
That'd be, like, maybe a future grant, future effort.
Right, well, I certainly would, would like us to start to tackle some of the issues that have been raised by these flood risk studies that are, you know, have really opened our eyes into what, what may be coming our way. So what do we think about option one, option two? Thoughts, Harry, your, did you want to finish your thinking?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be inclined to go, to go with, with the continuing, continuing work on it. It's both option one and option two.
Okay, so, all right, we didn't guide them there. Sarah, you have thoughts?
I, I like option one because I think we do want to prohibit large-scale, full stop. And I think, but I think that the small scale is not the type of, it's not the type of situation like, say, fracking or something where the town has decided to full stop prohibit it. You know, I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think like small-scale water extraction, depending on how we define it, as it's happening now, I don't think that in itself is a, is a problem, at least as it's happening now. And I guess what I don't like about prohibiting it completely, even with allowing the ones that are going now to continue, I don't know, it's just the idea that in forty years, let's say that operation, you know, stops at some point, somebody else wants to open one somewhere else, not on that site. The idea that we've prohibited that from ever happening just seems like, like I don't, to me, the small-scale water operation isn't, isn't like a, an environmentally detrimental thing that you'd actually want to prohibit. I could see if it was like proliferating all over the town and we had like five hundred operations opening and the wire table was a concern, whatever, I just don't see that. And so I don't see why, why prohibiting altogether is necessarily the right thing. And I think either way, we have to define it and we have to regulate it. So I guess I'm not in favor of a full-stop prohibition, but that's all- but that's also a philosophical question, I think, and that's why the, the group really wanted to bring it to the town board to, to decide between option one and two because in some ways, it's, it's the decision, you know, do, like philosophically, do you think that water as a resource shouldn't be sold beyond the bounds of the town? You know, like even, even in a small scale situation, cause if that's what the board thinks, then, then you should prohibit completely, you know? I guess I come down more on the side of, I think the small scale's okay, I think there's a place for that, and so I'd rather see us regulate it, um, but not prohibit.
Okay.
In my side it, uh, at one point a few years ago, we had someone looking at Red Hook, uh, for large scale, uh, uh, large scale operation, which, uh, did not come to pass.
Still good calls about, um, Christine?
Oh, Christine, Bill, okay, uh, I prefer option two.
Okay.
For many of the reasons, um, that Sarah just mentioned, I do think that, um, selling wire outside the bounds of the municipality is questionable practice. You know, in other areas of the country, there are concerns. Um, you know, we have a, we, this would allow an existing operation to continue. I think it also decreases, um, the onus on the town for enforcement and, um, and tracking and all this stuff, which, you know, we're, we're just getting more and more, and our staff's getting more and more things to do all the time. So, whatever we can keep simple, uh, I'm for that. And since, you know, we don't really have enough information to know what the impacts of allowing, um, multiple small scale operations, and we haven't defined that, so we don't know how small we're really talking, um, you know, and, you know, who would have thought that, you know, twenty years ago, we'd be talking about microhydro projects. So, in another, you know, ten years, who knows what will, would be feasible for, um, water harvesting, so I would go for option two.
Bill?
Well, I would, uh, agree with Christine that when the matter's been discussed at the intermunicipal task force, June fifteenth to twenty second, July sixth, the first thought among many of us was that the committee should, um, advise us what the status is of the Coker Town application for the planning board. That seems to be the one exception that was written into the moratorium law. But it's really confusing as to what the status is of that application, uh, whether it even qualifies as a five acre parcel, what he can extract from that parcel. Second thing is to update us as far as what the state has, has found, as far as what, uh, monitoring has occurred at Coker Town Springs, what amount has been extracted, if they have a record of that, so that we, uh, have some, uh, real information about small scale, you know, extraction in the town of Red Hook. The general consensus was, everybody seems to agree that large scale extraction should be prohibited. But when you talk about small scale extraction, the discussion has to do with, you know, removing it offsite, removing it outside the town. A commercial aspect of, uh, even a small scale extraction is, uh, could be offensive. And, um, so all of those things, um, should be considered as far as some input from ag and open space or the farming community about the use or need for water resources for the breweries, you know, these kind of newer, um, newer, uh, opportunities for ag business that, that are in our community. And then, of course, a definite discussion of what is offsite, I mean, there's a well up, uh, by Tivoli, off Tivoli where Al Trezis sells water to Tivoli. So, in the definition of, uh, withdrawing water offsite, you know, is that, that's withdrawing water offsite because it runs in a pipe from Trezis property down to the village of Tivoli.
That's true.
There's some technical language that has to really be examined as far as what we mean by small scale, offsite, commercial, you know, and then as far as the exception in the moratorium law, it's really based upon what that parcel owner has informed the town government, and it's not based, I don't think, on any documentation that we've seen from the state, so.
We have private water systems in, in town that are privately owned as well.
Well, just.
They have to be, has to be considered, considered in this.
Just, just for clarification, I'm, I'm not sure when we're talking about water harvesting and, and extraction and sale. I don't think we're referencing public water supply, which is what the two of you mentioned.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't either, I just, I'm just suggesting we be careful of the wording, that we don't step on ourselves.
Okay.
But when you look at option two, the first sentence could fit, Trezis Tivoli Water Operation.
Except for that's our municipal water supply.
Yeah, municipal water.
Okay, but doesn't say that, but it's on.
So, okay, so clarifying, um.
What's a non-commercial sale?
And any other examples of the.
Right, so that's, that's something, that's a definition, right? So, it's not, it, the.
Right.
It's not just what's large scale and small scales.
Right.
What's commercial.
And then also, well, no, I mean, just to move along, as far as the soil extraction, uh.
Well, wait, I'm, we're sticking with what.
But it's gonna take forever to get.
No, we're gonna do, we're gonna do quicker, okay, sorry.
That's all I gotta say.
I'll try to be quick, um, I agree with Harry so far and, um, open to both, um, sides over here on option two. I'm sympathetic to Sarah's points about, we, there may be a better location, um, in the future for a small scale. We need backup water supply, people need water for their pools. I just think that, uh, you know, we possibly could do it with option one and maybe just have, you know, fairly strict language about where and how and, uh, maybe even limit the number of, um, operators or operations in town.
And just to be clear, the regulatory burden is the same.
Yeah.
The regulatory burden for us is the same for option one and two. If we end up with more small scale operations, it might get higher, but we're gonna have to do the same. If we just, if we choose to define and regulate, then even if we do option two, we can't full scale prohibit and stop like what's happening now, then we will want to regulate what's happening now. Like, but, like Bill was saying, we wanna know what's happening. So, no matter what, you can see the bullets are the same, almost under small scale, you know, we're, we're still gonna have to do all the things.
But also.
Get the copies of permits, get, you know, check in, make sure they're doing one.
Right, then maybe only one or two or three or five.
Sure, right, we'll, we'll know how many, but you know.
Well, if you go with option two, we know how many, one.
Right, right.
If you go with option one, you know how many.
We don't know how many, right, exactly.
So, there is a difference.
Sure, sure.
Right.
Um, the one thing I do wanna point out, I don't believe, and our attorney's not here with us this evening, having a well deserved vacation, but I don't be, believe we can regulate where, where that water can go. So, most of it does go locally for obvious reasons, it's a big tanker, you know, it uses a lot of fuel, the cost is expensive to take it, you know, uh, long distances. But, uh, I don't think that we can say it's only to be delivered within Red Hook, but we do have to be cognizant, you know, it wasn't that many years ago when the real estate market was booming, everybody was developing, and the number of trucks that were coming through this community was, you know, I mean, I hear it from.
It's still pretty high.
Right, it's still pretty high, and you know, it's part of it as we, we sit in the middle of two state highways, um, near a, near a bridge, so. But, you know, food for thought on that, and I'm still open to how many small we have, but.
Well, I just wanna also go back to the enforcement issue because depending on how we define small scale, if we go with number one, you have, um, you know, brought up an interesting fact, it's like, you know, it, you know, if trucks pick up, people will call.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's more of an issue, right, so how many trucks is it, when is it happening? There's gonna be a more, you know, you have to respond to calls, so there is gonna be, you know, and there's nothing to say that that existing operation can someday be sold and become part of a larger company, which maybe would make it more amountable to do something. So, um, I just think that if we're, you know, trying to plan for the future, right, with this, then we have to think of all of these. Not only the natural resource aspects of it, but the potential.
We have to be able to.
Secondary impacts.
We have to be able to control the amount of order that's, that's leaving the, the property now, uh, now and in the future. And, um, and that doesn't exist right now, as near as I can tell over there.
Well, and having been on the planning board.
And, and we, I think we do have, and I don't know what the number should be, but there should be a number.
But having been on the planning board, other times when the current operation came before the board for various reasons, that, you know, there were never records that could be produced about what has the amounts that are being harvested.
Right, they'll need to come into compliance, yeah. Okay, uh, Bill, would you like to lead us into sand, gravel, plain, stone, long, eumiss or topsoil?
Well, the same issue has to do with what, you know, we should keep the mining threshold probably lower than one thousand tons, you know, uh, in the twelve month calendar period. I mean, that seems like it's kind of high to me, but, uh, and again, you know, task forces probably would, would agree with that. So, that, but, you know, the recommendation seems pretty straightforward there. Except the question is, should we change, you know, should we limit the mining threshold?
Right, so, uh, we had some examples, I think, uh, the working group had, uh, I think I may have shared some of those with you, uh, you know, last year or prior to that, Clinton, I think the town of Clinton uses a hundred tons as their threshold. So, just to give you some idea and.
Hundred tons a year?
A hundred tons a year, um, instead of a thousand. So, I may get this slightly wrong, but I think I have a rough estimate. Twelve yards and a yard is not necessarily the same as a ton depending upon the material, but it's not too far off. Twelve yards typically will be in a truckload, oftentimes depending upon the size of the truck. So, you could conceivably have a thousand tons possibly.
Is that around, uh, twelve tons then? Each yard is a ton?
Yeah, and then the truckers watching tonight are gonna say, boy, is he way off, but I think that I remember looking this up, it was something like that, maybe to, to reset.
One point three, um, tons in a yard.
One point three tons.
Is that whether it's stone or clay or sand?
Um, I think it's relative.
Right.
It's close.
To whatever the material is.
Right, so you would be looking at somewhere around eighty truckloads, just to give you a rough idea, um, with our current threshold. Um, and then, of course, there's the obvious, which is, we've spent all this money to protect the farmland and the soils that go along with the farmland.
Right.
And of course, if the farmland ends up getting depleted of those wonderful soils, then, um, we, we didn't do what we thought we were doing with, with those funds, so, um.
We maybe should, should, should lower the number for topsoil. I don't know whether we could enforce it, it'd be hard, hard to, uh, uh, hard to determine, and that's the desirable soil to take for the, for these people.
Okay, so for topsoil, um, so consider, does it sound like, uh, we're, we're on the same page there, considering a lower threshold?
I guess, I agree with you.
Um, and come up with a recommendation, uh, for that, um, which includes not only the amount of material that's going to be, uh, removed from the site. And I think when we talk about the, the soils on farms, you know, we should really think about whether we even want any material removed from the farm. Or do we want it, uh, redistributed, if it's topsoil, if it's good quality soil?
Topsoil should be, should stay, but, but some, sometimes the farmers, I think McKenny did, that, that was so long ago, built, built a pond for, for, uh, um, for watering his, his crops.
Right.
And, and it, and they do have to have a pond for, it makes sense.
Right, but there's no reason that they necessarily have to remove the material. We did have somebody come in who sort of wanted to back end it and say, oh, I wanna build this big pond and I wanna make sure I don't have any problem selling the soil, that would happen as a result of.
Well, I would say from starters, like, you can't, you can't sell, sell the, the topsoil in, in, in.
Well, I mean, that would be.
I need correction, it's one point three tons in a yard.
Okay.
Instead of yards and a ton.
So, um, I mean, that would be, I, I think a good place to start with this, would be to discuss this issue with DEC.
Yeah.
Because, uh, you know, there are easements on the properties and also the point, right, as, uh, most of our development, um, rulings and the AB district, et cetera, is to protect, you know, things are based on the prime and statewide important soils. So, you know, that may be enough of an argument with DEC to allow us to do something specific about those particular properties. So, um, but I agree that the, you know, it doesn't make any sense to allow removal of the prime or statewide important soils from farms at all, but particularly those that have been protected through easements or PDR programs.
Right, and there, uh, oftentimes the, those easements have, like I have an easement on my farm, it regulates what I can do.
Right.
As far as that, so there's, there's strict limitations on that, so that's good, but not all these properties have those, uh, limitations.
Well, we probably could therefore write something that says, you know, specifically addressing these properties that would have those kinds of agreements, PDR or easements or something.
So, they also talk about limiting the area, um, and quantifying it as a percentage of an acre or more. Commercial, non-commercial activity, including site preparation for development. So, there again, you know, people come in and say, no, 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 I only need to do this because I wanna build A, B, C and D. And so, how do we accommodate that, um, without, um, having some sort of, uh, you know, acreage limitation? Or, in the case of that one that got a waiver, we looked at the approved planning board, um, application, right, to determine that. And I think that might have been more than half an acre.
I wonder if.
Half an acre is, it's very small.
Yeah.
I wonder if Farm, uh, Ag and Markets has anything to say about farm, farm ponds and, um.
Well, we're not limiting farm ponds, we're, we're just saying, we're just saying we don't want the material to be sold off, uh, off of the farm.
And we don't, we don't want, uh, like champagne on the farm, you know.
Right, exactly.
So, it.
Right, so, uh, some of their other recommendations is prevention of impacts, flood, plains, erosion control, material storage, restoration cleanup, vehicle access routes, here we go again, secondary impacts, hours of operation, prohibit offsite commercial sale of prime soil, the, uh, require notification of CAC for special permit applications. No new regulations proposed for solar mining as of finding current code, require existing mining operations to come forward within six months to demonstrate compliance. I don't think we have an existing mining operation right now, um, in our town.
That was one forty-three with one on four.
That's the, that's this, that's this the one.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, no, I, I would definitely.
That's the state, maybe we should reference state guidelines or something.
Yeah, I would definitely want us to regu- uh, regulate soil mining more than we currently are right now. All right, uh, the third, uh, thing, uh, category is timber harvesting, commercial forestry, commercial logging, and we've seen a lot of that recently happen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, without, uh, even, even during our moratorium, we had to, uh, stop an operation that was violating the moratorium.
Problem is they had a way with it for a long time, and we didn't even know, know, which is amazing.
Well, I know, was that, that property wasn't that visible or, but we were right on it when we were notified.
Yeah. Well, well, once we knew.
Um, so the permit requires timber harvesting plan and reforestation plan where applicable, definition problem, timber harvest. So, we talked about that, that we have a few of these terms, we wanna make sure that it's clear what these terms mean. Timber harvest, commercial logging, forestry, forest management, make sure that, uh, everyone understands that. So, the first recommendation is to resolve that definition problem. The second would be to require special permit in all districts for all timber harvest projects with a planned harvest area of ten acres or more. So, um, that seems like a reasonable suggestion to me.
Is there, are this, I was under the impression there was some state code, uh, related to timber, tim, tim.
Well, you're required, DEC requires them to have a forest management plan.
Yeah.
And so, you would think with that term that that really means something, but what they can submit is very rudimentary. It just talks about areas where, you know, it's got dense, uh, forestation ready for harvest and then these circle areas in the middle where, you know, that's got some that's ready to go, and then the third area that's, um, not quite ready for.
So, it's very discretionary.
It's discretionary and it's very simple, I mean, it's, the requirements of the forest management plan are, you know, it's almost nothing. You could do it in a matter of minutes or hours.
Well, and, and also it doesn't really talk about, um, of course, the key to all of this is, is the, and for the penalty section that has to be high enough that.
Yeah.
Creates incentive for people not to be penalized.
Absolutely.
But the. You know, somehow we have to look at cumulative operations, so if you if you do ten acres under non-force plan, right?
Right.
And you do ten acres this year and then you do the adjacent ten acres next year.
Right.
And you might have clear cut twenty acres.
Right.
And, you know, and oftentimes it happens as an end around before development projects. Because once you're before the planning board, you're not supposed to make any changes to your property. So people tend to clear it before they come in, so that they don't have to wait later or they don't have to worry about what trees not to cut or, you know, whatever that may be. So there is some, we have to have to talk about something with cumulative effects, I think, so you can't do that end around.
That that situation, people trying to clear land before they come to the planning board is part of that recommendation under actually the soil. Just so you know where that came from, under their very first bullet under recommendations. Talks about distribution of land, it's excavation or tree removal below the defined timber harvest threshold. So that ten acre thresholds were, it's trying to get at those situations where-
Right.
You're not really a major logging operation, but you're trying to clear land for something, we still wanna know about it. If it's if it's significant, and that's why they were talking about major improvement of property, that's what that would apply to of half an acre or more. Doing that before you have a plan would not be-
Right. Yeah, but, so this goes to the penalty part also, which, you know, there may have to be some, not only just, you know, daily fines or whatever that may be. But, you know, maybe we have to look at the claw rack provisions of the ag districts, for instance. So if you if you do this in pieces and then you come in with an application for development within some period of time. Then there's some kind of way to deal with that.
Okay. In case you are converting property.
Okay, some of these things could end up being problematic when people are building a house on even relatively small parcels. That 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 may maybe that has to be defined somewhat separately or or be excluded. If you're on a, if you're on a one acre parcel or a two acre parcel, you're you're kind of forced into a lot of things.
Yeah.
Maybe these.
There's a big gap between half an acre and ten acres, isn't there?
Yeah, I think there was some talk of like, what is the appropriate threshold? Because I think when they talked to Ted, you know, Ted helped craft the town of Warwick code about this very issue. And I think his recommendation was half an acre.
Okay.
I think that's right. So he may have some insight into why did they pick half an acre or what's.
Well, rather than ten acres, you mean, is the move?
No, like maybe an acre or, you know, I don't know, I mean, you, where you said it is just, I mean, it's just a values judgment on like, what do you comfortable with? You know, how much of a headache do you wanna create for people who are-
Same thing, why is it a half an acre for gravel mining soil, but ten acres for trees?
I have lived, lived in a place where half an acre was the state.
That recommendation is about trees and soil, the half an acre.
Yeah.
You see, it's it's both.
Well, but it says, well, okay, the recommendation is for projects with a planned harvest area of ten acres or more.
No, I know, I'm saying under soil though, the recommendation.
Yeah, under timber, timber harvesting.
So if it's ten or more, requires the special permit, so.
That that would require the special permit, but-
Special permit, it's not saying necessarily you couldn't harvest. You know, less with with the less restriction. So secondary impacts, water courses, wetlands, flood plains, erosion control, material storage, same thing. Notification of neighbors, restoration and cleanup, we've seen that as a big problem. We had flooding issues with one dump maybe a year ago or so off of Aspen Hall. Restoration of temporary driveway, so, you know, those things are important. I require bond for damaged town infrastructure, there was an issue, I think, with that one about clogged drainage.
Well, they didn't get their bond back yet, because they didn't finish the job, so it's just a matter of, you know, when to pull the trigger and say, okay, you're not getting your money back. Where do we restore it?
Yeah.
It hasn't been decided.
Yeah, but I think there was concern that there was flooding impacts to the neighbors there because it was not going in the culvert. The culvert was covered or crushed or something, I don't remember, yeah.
Right.
Okay, sorry, Harry, you started slicing.
No, it's all right, I think you 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 brought it up.
Okay. So I think these are good recommendations, it sounds like we need to think some more and talk with them on the twenty fifth. About the sizes of these thresholds that we have some more questions about that. And maybe even before then, Sarah, as as sort of the liaison for this, maybe you wanna shoot them?
Yeah.
And say, you know, we discussed this.
Threshold during one of the-
Right, and the thresholds, and we're just curious, how'd you come up with these numbers? And how would you feel if we had something a little bigger than half an acre, a little smaller than ten acres or something?
Do you want Ted and Julia to like come up with a memo ahead of time to share with the board? Or would you rather just have them like come prepared to discuss?
What would you? Well, actually, it'd be great if they'd be here on the twenty fifth, but I don't know, that has to be like a detailed memo, but maybe just like a simple email explanation to give us more.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay.
More to chew on, if that makes sense. And then we'll try and see if we can come to some sort of consensus on the water harvesting. Options there between now and then as well. So in an effort to move along, we do have the resolution which has been prepared for us, resolution number forty-one, did I get that right, Sarah?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. July tenth, twenty eighteen, establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook of local law D proposed of twenty eighteen. And the wherethes essentially say that we enacted a twelve month moratorium on extractive operations. It's set to expire on the fourth of September, and we've authorized the C A C. And they have gathered a a working group to make some recommendations on how to amend our zoning law. And so we've gotten some preliminary recommendations, and now we're giving feedback on those. And at our next meeting, we're going to direct them to start to prepare a draft in the ensuing months. What those changes might look like in the form of the extension for six months, as we decided at our last meeting. And the law is here with us, and it will be referred to two thirty-nine and to the county. And it's type two action, a continuation of a type two action for the purposes of secret. And I so move, so setting the public hearing for July twenty fifth at seven thirty-five, I would suggest.
So moved. Or second round.
Okay, any further discussion?
There's just one little correction.
Yeah.
It's, we just have one official newspaper now, so we gotta get rid of the king's-
Yes, I see that, little template is still cropping into our computers, okay. So we'll amend that, that it will be published in the one official newspaper, give to journal, will be available here at town hall, also on our website. And that's July twenty fifth at seven thirty-five, all in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you very much, okay. We are moving to discussion of food truck permit application and fees. You've seen the draft of the food truck permit application. It's gone from our building and zoning to our attorney to the town, it's been amended. There are lots of information being requested, not only the name of the applicant, but the property owner. The registered owner of the food truck, so there conceivably could be three separate individuals involved in the food truck permit. There are some numbers here, based upon some of the examples we had, but really they're just filler for discussion right now. A seasonal permit, which could be up to nine months, I don't believe we've had anybody do a food truck for nine months. But that would be the maximum under the law. Potentially, what's in here right now is five hundred dollars as a fee for that whole season, if you will. Building department says they would need to go out there several times and check on the compliance with the food truck. Obviously, the county board of health does that as well separately for those health related issues. Daily permit, which is a maximum three consecutive days, has a filler for discussion, twenty five dollars per day fee associated with it. Just to remind the folks at home, this is not pertaining to if you wanted to have a food truck come to your house for a day because you're having a graduation party or anything, that's exempt from needing a permit. And so there would be no fee associated with that, this is for public consumption, the food truck. And, you know, some communities have done it on a monthly basis, if it's been seasonal. So, for example, if a food truck's going to be out there for five or six months, you could say how about a hundred dollars a month? Because you're going to have at least one inspection that month from our building department, and a hundred dollars would be sort of a relative cost. For for those services between the paperwork and the paperwork and the follow through. And just the salary, frankly, for the employee. So I throw it out to to you all to consider, do you have some thoughts on how you would like to see those fees? And then obviously we can go back to the application itself if it's missing anything.
The fee, the fees seem a little robust to me.
Do they?
My gut feel.
Okay.
Initial gut feel, without giving a lot of thought.
All right, well.
Twenty five dollars a day? Yeah, so so for a weekend, it's seventy-five bucks for if you're doing, gonna do a weekend, so.
That's kind of low to me.
Lizzy?
Yeah.
Well, if we have to send our building department out there to, you know, make sure there's compliance. And again, this is for public consumption.
Right.
Not a private truck on private property for, you know, attendees to an occasion or anything like that. So the max we would get is seventy-five dollars for a three day install, if you will. That doesn't seem that high to me, Harry, it doesn't seem it would compensate us necessarily for the time involved issuing the permit as well.
Well, and when I think in terms of, I'll play devil's advocate.
Okay.
Cause I'm not, is a-
This won't be your first time, by the way.
Yeah, I know, I enjoy doing that. And it's, we're not likely to have a food truck who operates exclusively here. So if if if, and if they, if they're, if they're gonna be a food truck working this general region, they they might, they might operate in ten towns up here. To to get through a season and make it financially worthwhile for them. Like, I just can't imagine a food truck who would would say, well, I operate in the Red Hook period.
So what what you're saying, I think, is that if they had to pay fees in all of these communities moving around for three days, are we talking about the short term now, Harry?
Oh, sorry, I was just generalizing when I said that.
Okay.
And and the same, the same thing would be maybe true, seventy-five dollars of. Now, now suppose you're, suppose you're moving around and you're and you're in, and you're in Red Hook for, say, three weekends in the season. And then you're in Milan for two weekends and then it 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 rapidly races your your profit, your profits.
Right, but let's not forget our our responsibility is is the public, is the public interest, the taxpayer interest. So we can't subsidize, you know, in a way, businesses by saying you don't have to pay a fee to open up shop here. When we say to all other businesses, frankly, that pay taxes and incur so many other expenses that.
Do we have any sense of what what the municipalities?
Yeah, I sent that that information to you, I gave you a few examples, it's been a while, I apologize, it was probably three minutes ago.
If I saw that, I'd have got it.
Yeah, but all different kinds of ranges, I mean, you could go to, obviously, New York City is thousands of dollars.
Yeah, New York City is-
Because they have issues not just with permits, but parking, they have to pay for their permit and the parking because they're tying up a meter in many cases.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, New York City.
So we've seen as high as the thousand dollars for a seasonal. And don't forget, you know, if you look at, say, a food truck, and we have two that I believe are in operation maybe four or five months, would that be a good estimate?
And it's like April through October.
That's possible. April through October, so five, six months? So if you're doing a visit every month for a hundred bucks and you're paying five hundred or six hundred, because you're five or six months. Six months is a hundred and eighty days, it's two dollars and what is that, two seventy-five a day? For a permit, if if you're trying to look at it from the vendor's perspective?
We have, I only know of one one food truck that's here for the season.
Well, we, the the planning board had application for a beer garden that involved a food truck.
Okay, so that that would be our third then, yeah?
Right.
Well, what do you think, Christine, about the fee seasonal dealing?
Well, again, I, you know, I think your point is well taken, that we can't be subsidizing businesses, right? So I would like to see something that is hopefully realistically covering the costs to the town to have to, you know, issue and regulate and inspect the permits. So if, you know, I would imagine that by the time you do all that, it's at least a couple hours. You know, somebody asks you questions, you have to look over the paperwork, you're going out somewhere, that it may not be, you know, a quick one, two, three, you may have to say you have to do this, you have to do that. Then you come back and then you have to finalize whatever, you know, file, get to put the fees in, blah, blah, blah. So it's probably at least two hours when you count all of that.
Well, certainly for the seasonal, right, because those food truck operations are typically different, they're not just the truck oftentimes.
So what is? Well, and there's gonna be, you know, if they're gonna have to get site plan, you know, approval, then you have to check to make sure that, you know, the stuff is. I mean, if the tables are supposed to be here, that they haven't migrated over there and things aren't too close to the road.
Right.
So, you know, it's, if you, it could not be, it's not really supposed to be just like a drive-by audible, yeah, it looks good.
Right.
You know?
Right.
And let's not forget that if, you know, neighbors may make complaints, there could be more trips out on a seasonal permit.
Right, there could be a force. Good point.
So, you know.
That's true, Harry got complaints about Mr. Dingling, did you?
It did.
You did?
I did, I did, and and I I have I have the law sitting in front of me at home.
Okay.
And so, you know, over the course of, I guess, we might wanna, or I don't know, did you get a chance to talk to Bill or Bob or Steve about? In a seasonal situation, I mean, on a one day or or three consecutive days, they probably go once, of course, but, you know, how often do they think they would have to go?
Steve, Steve thought, yeah, but if he had to estimate, he'd probably make four visits during a season. To do, you know, compliance checks and so on and so forth for for those types of operations. And that makes sense, because you don't want anything that's not falling within your code to continue for too long. If somebody's gonna be operating this for a hundred and eighty days, for example, six months.
Do you have any other seasonal permit examples in town? Anything else that we permit seasonally?
No, well, like, here's a, here's an example, for a tent. So if somebody goes and gets a tent, erect a tent, we charge two hundred and fifty dollars for it.
Like a, like a party tent?
We do.
Two hundred, like a big tent, we charge two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that like for parties or for public, what is that for?
It's a tent.
So the town charges the?
So if somebody erects a tent for an event, we have an inspection charge for that, and that is because-
Like on private property or on business, like what is that?
I I would have to defer to the building.
Do we have a permit to have a tent?
Absolutely.
We do.
Because think about it, you have the public going somewhere into a temporary structure that if it's not put up correctly.
Probably like the Spiegel's tent.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, well, I know that-
Well, there was a tent on London Avenue over the weekend.
Well, we had, we had Winnicky here, right, at our last meeting, Winnicky had their annual gala in the town of Red Hook. They had to pay a two hundred and fifty dollar charge for that tent. So there's issuing the permit, there's the inspection to make sure that it's it's erected properly, so people don't get injured. I think two fifty is a little high myself, but, you know, that's something I'm very busy with.
A tent has a, a tent, and he loans the people, it pops up here, there, and there.
Well, that's a little pop, pop, pop-up tent, so.
Well, it's, it's the size, well, it's half the size of this room.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I don't, I don't wanna stray, I just. I just, it's it's not quite what you asked, but it's the closest thing that I can think of.
I wondered if we could, I think I'm okay with the overall price, but I wondered about prorating it seasonally.
Doing the hundred a month kind of thing?
Yeah, or in some way a little asterisk, like, you know, I don't know. Yeah, just because since it is a seasonal thing, somebody comes in in August for the last few months that we, right, we only allowed them up until early in the October or something, or whatever.
Right.
Just seems a shame that they'd have to pay the five hundred one if our if our rationale is that we're thinking of it as a seasonal cost to us.
Right, so if they only want to do it for one month, why would we charge that person the same as we bring it for six months?
Right.
So, yeah, I would be more careful.
Because we don't have a one-month permit, that's why.
No, no, well, that's not true. You can have it for a month.
Well, it's not proposed as a one-month permit.
It's a seasonal permit not to exceed nine months. It's it's exactly right. I think it would be better to have it on a monthly basis. This way it would also give us the opportunity to track the dates, you know, to make sure that we understood when those seasonal trucks were on those properties.
So you could come in and get a one-month permit. Your seasonal, you're asking for a seasonal permit and you'd be asking for, for say, a month's time. And then you would renew that if you wanted to stay a second month, just keep renewing it up to nine months, is what you're saying.
Or come in and say, I'm I'm there for five months, here's my five hundred bucks.
Make it five hundred dollars a month, a month of or five months, but it's valid for nine months.
Say, let me make it a hundred a month for five, is that what you mean to say?
That's what it is now, nine months for five hundred.
Nine months for five hundred.
Well, I mean, if we're charging two hundred and fifty dollars for a tent inspection, why?
Which is a one-time use.
Right, I mean, this, so.
Tent inspection is a safety.
I would say then if we're going to do that, then it should probably be at least a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
But we're okay with doing it on a monthly basis? I think that's better.
Yeah.
I think it's more equitable. Do you have a, I'll say one fifty, do you have an idea, Bill? I mean, there needs to be commensary with the workload for our building department. And I think Christine's right, you know, probably an hour, certainly initially, maybe two. An inspection, maybe an hour, hour and a half, hundred, a hundred and fifty. I think we're in the right ballpark to compensate for when I look at the hourly.
Probably lean more toward a hundred.
Okay.
If you got three food trucks and a hundred dollars, then your couple hours are well spent.
Yeah, I'd go along with that.
Hundred dollars an hour, a hundred dollars a month, a hundred dollars an hour sounds good, too.
Comes out about the same way.
Well, I mean, that's a, that's my point. Do we know what the cost is for us to send somebody out there for an hour and do the paperwork beginning and ending to do an inspection?
It's 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 very close to a hundred dollars an hour. And we look at the hourly wage and benefits of that employee and the associated costs of that office, because there's other, you know.
Right, like your overhead, right, like what you do at Grant.
Yeah, so it's it's definitely a hundred dollars an hour, easy.
You can always raise it after they have a year or so of experience.
What do we think?
I think it's low, but I'm not I'm not numbered, so.
One fifty, one hundred?
One hundred.
One hundred.
Hundred. Okay, one hundred dollars a month. And are we limiting it to five hundred dollars or just a hundred dollars a month?
Then I think it'd just be a hundred dollars a month, period.
Okay, and then we'll look to a building department to do an inspection?
Yep.
Okay, and they generally run five or six months anyway, so we're pretty close.
Is that like, you know, payable? We're not going to make a pay per month though, right? Like we, do you kind of indicate on here how many months you're going to be operation? And that's you write one check at the beginning?
Yeah.
Right, we're not saying like you have to come back every month and pay a hundred dollars, right?
Well, we could also just make our lives easier and just say it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the initial permit and a hundred dollars a month for the second month and each month afterwards. And that's an incentive for them to just tell us the three or four or five months that they want to be here. Would that make sense?
Wait, what did you just say, a hundred and twenty-five for the first month?
Right, so they'll come in every month and say, here's my hundred dollars for the month. That we have a one fee for the initial. No, that's what you said, but I'm wondering if you if it would make sense to maybe have the initial first month fee, you know, just a tiny bit higher and then they tell us the number of months and then they write us a check, let's say, for four twenty-five because they're going to be here for four months.
Well, I think that maybe we should just put something on here about how many months are you asking for.
Okay.
Right, and I think it should be non-refundable. So, I mean, if you ask for a four-month permit and you leave in a month and a half, we have to figure out.
Well, I think we're going to get people coming in and coming each and every month then. Do we want that?
I don't think so.
I know.
Yeah, so that's why I'm thinking it should be like a higher amount just to get the permit and then a lower amount for each and every month after the first month. Does that make sense?
Well, what what Bill said was you just put down like, or somebody said it like. I am I am coming in today, May thirty-first. I am asking for a three-month permit until July whatever and here's my three hundred dollars or here's my two hundred, but.
We're okay with that.
But and, you know, maybe something that's like, that you don't like do half months, like it's just.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean, like.
Sometimes they say, I'm going to start with two, if I'm doing all right, I'll come back in and I'll buy another two.
Yeah, well, there's nothing to stop them from doing that.
Well, I just don't want them to have to come in five months or whatever.
Right, I don't think they should have to pay five times.
Well, then, the only way to have them not do that is to just have a seasonal pass. And it's X amount of money and there's left to nine months and you.
But something is you could do that though, right? You could come in on April first or whenever we, the earliest we said, and say, I'm getting my six-month pass, here's my six hundred. Boom, done, right?
Okay.
Isn't that isn't that what we're saying, like, you could do that?
Okay.
Right, you could come in every month, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think they will.
Yeah.
It's not that much fun to come in.
No.
We enjoy having you here in town, although it's not that much fun. Yeah.
What, well, anyway.
Did you get confused by that?
Well, no, but I'm confused about what food trucks we have already around town. I mean, we think of Papa's Best Batch.
Yeah.
But the one at Hardiman's, I mean, is that considered a food truck on a monthly basis?
Yeah, yeah.
They're still up and running.
Yeah, yeah. And then Christine mentioned that there might be a third one, the from the ground brewery, they're interested in having one, okay.
Their their application indicates that there's food truck.
Okay, so if I have it, the consensus is one hundred dollars a month because that's about the cost it will be for a monthly inspection for the seasonal permit. Yes, okay. Daily permit, per day basis, twenty-five?
That seems low to me.
It seems good to me. Seems high to Harry.
I'm happy with it, too.
So it's up to you, Sarah.
I'm happy.
I just put my two cents initially.
I just say, like, I don't know that we, do we do this with all of our fees where we try to calculate the complete cost of an employee going out to do something? I mean, the offices exist for the public good and the point of the permit is to try and defray some of that, among other things. So I'm I feel like twenty-five for a start is okay and we look at it every couple of years when we look at other fees and raise it if it seems problematic, that's my feeling. I I because I hear what Perry's saying, like, a lot of times it's not just a one-time thing. You're there for three days or two days or a festival, you know, I don't know, so.
Well, we are supposed to be.
Well, there are other, yeah, there are other fees that you pay if you want to come into town and do business and you're getting approved at the planning board, you pay for everything.
Yeah.
Right, and it's supposed to be a corollary.
Pay for all the lawyer review, all the, you know, pressure, consultant review, et cetera.
Gee, does anybody know what the village charges?
Good question. We're going to talk about the corollary between expenses and and fees charging with our recreation fees, which is our next subject, but let's let's wrap up food truck permit application so it sounds like a hundred dollars a month and twenty-five dollars per day for the seasonal and daily. Were there any questions or concerns?
So you're eliminating the seasonal?
Nope, that is the seasonal.
No, that's still in there, okay.
That's the seasonal permit, up to nine months, one hundred dollar per month.
You should have just put the phone number on the application, the building, well, the phone number.
Yeah, and the logo will go on it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And when you're talking about a property owner consent form, you need to establish a consent form also.
Okay. I think we do have a generic one that we use for consent, but yeah, we should. Yeah, the planning board has one that they use all the time. All right, good. Thank you very much. So a motion to approve the food truck permit application and fees as amended, and I so long.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Not a lot.
Okay, so sticking with fees again, so recreation fees. We have a report from our rec commissioner and director, their input. You know, we've done, obviously, we've been looking at rec park and we've been upgrading our facilities and realizing that, you know, things are costing more than we thought they would and taking a look at our recreation fees that we are currently charging developers for new lots and whether that's sufficient to cover the costs associated with the individuals who'll be coming into those new developments. And so this is a fairly lengthy thing. If you recall the last one that we had, this is very much in that format. Some estimates for all the things that we either have been working on, whether it's the rebuild of the tennis courts or things that we need to accomplish, maintenance and construction. And, you know, he goes on to, John goes on to say, many of the projects that we still have to tackle and that are in our plans and so.
Do we know when the last time we raised a rec?
Yeah, it was three years ago, basically, not even a full four years ago.
For what, what, remember?
It was in sixteen.
Well, it was, at one time it was thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
And and I don't, I think that was, that was, I think it was raised right after I was on the board to thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, and then it made it to five.
Then it went to five.
And then it went to five. And, you know, back in those days, we were talking about, oh, let's rebuild the tennis courts for a hundred thousand dollars. But three hundred and forty thousand dollars later, we're hoping to get the striping corrected.
Challenger field for five twenty-nine.
Was an initial, if we were just talking about the field, right, exactly. So and that that amended because it's now not just a challenger field, it's and it's bigger and all that stuff. But yes, so the costs are.
The state, the state has a limit that when you go to the planning board, the planning board says it's going to be five thousand or whatever per parcel. And then the state has has, I'm looking at Chris. Wasn't wasn't wasn't, doesn't state, the state have some sort of a limit that if you do what they consider adequate, providing adequate rec facilities on site, that they don't have to pay a fee?
It's, I don't think it's a state designation, it's a local decision, a local decision about whether they provided adequate facilities or not.
That's that's correct. And and so the options are, and actually the way the law works is that they're asked to demonstrate that they can provide land, up to ten percent of the land in our case, in the town of Red Hook, for recreational purposes. If it's not suitable for those purposes or if they can't do it, then they are asked to pay a fee in lieu of that or a combination.
Well, the question also is whether they're providing land that can meet the town's needs. So, you know, on here is a lot of active recreation needs. So, you know, if someone wants to come in and say, well, here's five acres of walking paths, you know, the town could still say, well, that's great, but we need this or that. You're going to have this many children and people in your development, so that's not going to meet the needs of our recreation plan. So.
Right, and attached to this is our consultant, Michelle Bright, gave us the multipliers that are used apparently by just about everyone when calculating the impacts of developments and how many kids will be generated from that type of development. And obviously, each development is different, the housing stock and so on and so forth, to estimate what pressure will be put on your rec facilities. And we already know that we have pressure on our rec facilities. So, you know, it's a fairly lengthy three-page analysis here and their recommendation is to charge developers eight thousand dollars per new lot for new development. And so I think, you know, lays out a good, good case, good analysis, talking about how many lots are available without receiving funds for recreation. There are over five hundred vacant lots in our town. And, you know, some of those may have easements on them and make it so they can't be developed. But, you know, it's it's certainly four hundred plus that can have a house on it right now today. So I would support this recommendation coming out of the rec director and Michelle. Any thoughts, Christine, Bill?
Where is the recommendation?
Can.
Way down below.
Yeah, no, I I would agree with it.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Christine, okay. Sarah, Harry?
Go ahead, Harry, what do you want to say?
Is it, no, no, wait, this this is eight thousand dollars for each lot that's created.
That's created, each new lot that's generated, so it's.
So if I come in, if I come into Red Hook and buy a parcel, it's already had the eight thousand dollar fee.
Exactly. So it's not for anybody who wants to buy land and create a new house on it.
If you're not subdividing anything, it doesn't.
It's only the subdividing process that that I just want to be certain of.
Yes, so an individual, one day they make their home, or someone else.
Right, so.
You know, this this is a commercial, it's a commercial operation you're talking about. I mean, I'm thinking about for three or four.
Yeah.
It's a commercial activity.
Well, you know, it's interesting, I looked at some other communities and they're all over the charts, but, you know, you can tell which communities aren't paying attention to their rec expenses versus what they're charging developers and which ones are. I mean, there, I came across a community about an hour south of here that's charging twelve and a half thousand dollars per month. You know, as an as a percentage.
In Duchess County?
That was not in Duchess, I think that was in, there's one in Putnam that's close to ten. There's one in northern Westchester that's well over ten. They're all over the map. I mean, I've seen some that are very low as well.
With a house in Westchester, twice what it costs here.
What's that?
A house in Westchester costs twice.
You know, sure, 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 sure.
But in Duchess County around us, are one of the fees.
Yeah, now, I want to caution you because we can't set our fees based upon what others are setting our fees. We have to have a relationship between what our costs are and what the impacts are of these developments that developers are putting into our community. And so the numbers are really what should be guiding us, not what other communities are doing. And so I think the numbers are, you know, rather persuasive. And this is, you know, the same type of analysis they did for us the last time.
I, I think I'm fine with the numbers as far as the recommendation. I think we should have a, part of our purpose is to talk about how we're funding our rec needs. I think we need to have a similar discussion about the user fees, which is a separate issue, but it's it's a, it's in the same ballpark, if you will.
It's all revenue generating.
Right, it's all, and and it dovetails with the conversation we just had about, you know, what what is our philosophy as a board about, you know, when when there's a special use of a public thing, how do you, do you expect the user to pay for the cost? How much of that costs, whatever? I think recreation is obviously a, is a different type of situation than, you know, like business type things like a, like a building permit or a food truck permit. But I do think it's a conversation we need to have on a board level. We've sometimes had at the recommission level, there's a really wide variety of opinions. But I think asking for there to be a study of what other towns do, what are the recommendations, say, at the state level or internationally or wherever, I mean, you'll find that they're all over the place because I tried to do that when we were negotiating, negotiating with the school district, yeah, a few years ago, to look at what the fees are because that that's our prime example of a user fee is the school district. But do you think if we are asking some people who use the rec park to pay user fees, we should be looking at all the user fees? And I think some of them, you know, you're. we should be looking at all the user fees, and I think some of them, you know, you're talking, like a league that uses the tennis courts, for example, five dollars a season per player, you know, I'm not sure, when you look at the cost of what the tennis court is and the value of that, and it feels a little arbitrary, you know, when we haven't really done the full study, I think. We, like, I think we do have to show, why are we raising fees? There's a reason, and it's because it's a, it's a really significant investment, and, you know, it's a, and it's a community good, right? And so I think just looking at sort of the fairness and the, like, when do we let things be free? You know, we let the pavilion be rented for free, for everybody, as far as I know, right? So we don't ever charge, doesn't matter if it's Hannaford or the Boy Scouts or your birthday party, right? Like, so I think, just looking at all that, so I'm just raising that as, like, I think we need to look at that. I also think, I appreciate what John did here with the list, but I've talked to him before and Ann also about creating more like a spreadsheet, where we list all these assets and we really show, like, a lot of these, if you look at them and they're already marked it up, but like, some of these costs are what it would cost to repaint a shed, and some of them are about what it would cost to completely rebuild a tennis court, and those are really, what we want here is like, what would it cost to build a whole new, of all of those things, right? Because we need to know, like, what the value is. So I, you know, I appreciate John's time on this, because it's a busy season for him, and, but I think we should have, for future.
Yeah.
You know, either task maybe even our engineering group to do it, or, I know Ann's also very busy, but I know she could do it. She and I started to do one. I'd love to see us have sort of the next version of this, which is like a full.
It would be easier to manipulate the information if it wasn't a spreadsheet.
Exactly, and you would be able to put in the columns of like, you know, you know, we just did the tennis courts in twenty eighteen, but we haven't done the pavilion in forty years, so, oop, that's gonna be, you know what I mean, like.
Here's what I would say, we have to do it anyway, it's part of our capital budget.
Right.
So if you're good with this, to make our determination tonight.
Yeah, for tonight, I'm fine, I just raised that also.
Historically, this, the, the fees that is set, that we have now were set arbitrarily about ten years ago, and, and it was, it was, there were no fees prior to that, and, and we just decided, okay, we're, we're just gonna get people used to a fee, and then we'll figure out what we, what is a reasonable, reasonable price. So, so what, the fees you have now are diddly.
Yeah, the user fees you're back to, yeah, okay. I think we all agree we need to look at user fees and see what, what our philosophy is about recreation, who gets to use it at what price, and whether or not it is really something that belongs to the public.
Do we need a resolution about the rec fees?
So, about the recreation fees, these fees, yes, I would just, all we need is a motion to amend our fee schedule to make the recreation fees for subdivisions eight thousand dollars, and I would so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Okay, Loby? Well, I wouldn't say right along, but let's say, along. CFA grant opportunities, as you know, the state has a consolidated funding application, not the world's easiest mechanism to navigate several topics, several areas, but many programs, and we never like to miss an opportunity to apply for grants, because if they're going to give out taxpayer or other funds, might as well bring it back here to work. So what I'm suggesting to you is that deadline is coming up at the end of the month, so please give some consideration to what you might want to apply for. We know we have this rec expansion project. I did inquire with our engineers about applying for parks money, you know, Winnicky came in front of us to apply for five hundred thousand dollars. We could apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars for our rec park project. I don't know how it would rank necessarily. This was sort of Randy's answer about, you know, what would be involved, but certainly I know the cost of rec park expansion facilities is something that, you know, gets discussed, and one more, Harry, if you can pass that down to Sue, please. And so, you know, I would seriously consider that we go ahead and make an application to parks for that. Half a million dollars is not something that we really afford to ignore the possibility. There would be a cost by our engineers, that, the, the estimate would be about two thousand dollars. It's a fifty-fifty matching grant, so you don't get too many of these applications being sent up to the state. There's a significant amount of money, because municipalities do have to match it. That's something that we would obviously be doing now that we are aware perhaps of some of the costs associated with the expansion, but there are other eligible match types besides the money, which is labor, donated services, and so on and so forth. Some of the pre-development cost engineering fees can be covered retroactively, and that's something that we have started to incur. And so there was some things that we would need to do, and obviously they have a lot of the information already for submitting the application. So I would put it out there that this would be something that I would be supportive of and would help us in making, you know, a project more affordable. So, any thoughts, Christine, Bill?
Well, I did spend a little time looking through the book, the application book that they sent out. It didn't seem to me like there, you know, there's a lot of categories, but we don't have projects or we don't qualify for a number of them. Under the parks, you know, it's parks, recreation, historic preservation. So the three ideas that I came up with that, again, just from reading through it. Are a new, the new playground. Also, and then looking at John's, this would be interesting, but, and the historic preservation part, I don't know what we have for St. Margaret's. And one of John's things in the plan was pocket, sort of pocket parks, and talked about whether we might wanna put a.
Top lot.
Top lot at St. Margaret's. So I don't know if that would be of interest to, you know, having those two sort of things, or whether they're very purely historic preservation, so that might not really, they might dislike that more than they like it. And then Rec Park West, as you've already come up with an outline here, so, or at least at the time. So those are the three ideas that I came up, you know, I mean, there's local water brunt revalorization money, but we already have a grant for LWRP that we're working on now, so we can't get another one of that right now. And I looked at the green innovation grant money, and that didn't seem like it had anything for us and some of the other energy things we're also either in the midst of or about to start something we have money for. So that cuts us out of some of those. So those are the only three ideas I came up with.
Those are good ideas. I just wanna mention.
What's your opinion of this one, then?
I think this is good, you know, I mean, I don't remember offhand if, for instance, it's a playground has, also falls under the five hundred thousand dollar, I mean, this is the one, the rec park one is the one where we could max out the most, we could ask, obviously ask for the most money.
They had most of the work done already.
Yeah, that's, that's the part of the issue.
For the July.
Well, for the, for the playground, we have budgets and monies and, and plans.
But there, we could only ask for a hundred and something thousand.
Right, exactly.
Because it's a fifty-fifty match, so food for thought on that.
Right, that's why I said, so the Rec, Rec Park West is obviously the one that we could ask for the most amount of money.
Just so you know, on St. Margaret's, we did apply, right, Harry? We did apply for more money for St. Margaret's several years back, and we had issues with the valuation of the property.
That was the big issue initially.
And so they wouldn't give us.
Of money.
They wouldn't give us a certain amount of money, because they appraised the property and so on and so.
Well, and I tried to find, because I know some of the issues with St. Margaret's is our, is the handicapped accessibility and the systems, you know, and, and it didn't seem like that was high-level funding imperatives in the, in the way I read it, and I'll dig into a little further, right?
Right.
I think that we need something like four, four to five hundred thousand to make that a usable building without, and, and when I say that, I mean, just to make it usable.
Right.
It needs, needs all mechanicals installed, there are no mechanicals, there's no handicapped accessibility.
Right, so I'm just saying, those are the three ideas I came up with, but given the timeframe that we have and how fast we have to turn this application around, you know, if, we need to go, if we don't have all of those numbers for St. Margaret's, and I don't think they're offering five hundred thousand dollars for historic preservation, for instance, and they also, I don't know if that's one, but you know.
We have to have a purpose for the building as well.
Well, and, you know, you know, there's this much money, this much of it's already gone to some line item things, and then this much of it has to go to certain kinds of places that we aren't, and so the pot is much smaller than, than this, this one for Rec Park West, so.
And we can apply more than one grant, just, just so everybody knows, that's also a possibility.
Whether we can really get more than one done by the twenty-seventh, this is another question.
Okay. Harry, Sarah, thoughts?
I'm trying to decide, I, I'm not sure, I'm, you know, I work for a grant writing firm that does CFAs, that's one of the things we do, and I actually have a client that's working on a parks grant.
Oh.
So I think, but I'm not the lead grant writer on it, but I think, I'm trying to figure out, like, the, the recommendation from the ethics group was very muddy, it was sort of like, oh, we trust you, just be really clear about what you're working on. But I feel like, I'm not sure if I should recuse myself or just say that, because I'm not really working on that, that parks grant, working on a different grant for them, but I, I think in terms of our priorities, I think any of the rec stuff would be, would be fine to apply for, and I think we should, you know, go for whatever we can, and I agree that the playground is probably less of a needy project than the request at this point, you know, just in terms of the overall costs of it, so, and probably would have made a great application, though. I mean, the other thing to remember is just that money won't come until January. I think that's important for the project.
Well, I think, well, I think now that we've got, hopefully, fingers crossed, more time.
Yeah, right.
To figure this out. Does it make sense, Harry?
I, I think we should, but, should, should make a, an offer to buy land north of the rec park from, from these people we're working with to fix their water problems.
Well, as, as you know, I posed that question to them, and they said, thank you, but no, thank you, we're not interested.
But we don't want the whole piece of land, we only want a few, few acres down, down in the south end.
Their answer is, I look out my back window and I see nobody, and I wanna keep it that way.
I wouldn't even see them, I hope, and.
I, I asked, and, and you see from tonight's, you know, application, you know, what kind of environmental constraints would be, I mean, we'd run into all the same issues, all the same costs as the property that we were already acquired for these purposes, you know, additional parking, flooding and all that stuff.
Only infrastructures, yeah, they're all.
I would also just say, Christine, if you want to, I, I don't think we could pull together anything for St. Margaret's before, like, anything that would be compelling, I know. But if you want, I mean, I think if you and I look at what they, usually it's roughly the same year to year, you know, we could look at it and try to figure out, what do we already have, what would we need to have for next year? I think that would be really interesting, whether it's a pocket park or some kind of building renovations or whatever. Maybe we could do that, and maybe we could use that as seed project, we, we need to relaunch the St. Margaret's something. It's basically defunct, and we need to reconfigure a group, so. Maybe that would be an interesting way to do that, would be to say, here's our, here's our task for the first six months or whatever, is to like, I think that'd be really interesting.
Yeah, I'd be interested in working on that.
Great. That's exciting, thank you very much. So it does sound like we have consensus to apply to parks for a grant to eliminate up to five hundred thousand dollars for our recreational expansion, and did we prepare a formal resolution? I don't think we did. So we'll do that at our next meeting, but what I'm looking for now is a motion to authorize the engineering firm, Tianba, to prepare that application for our July twenty-fifth meeting as articulated in their communication, and I said, okay, thank you. No, I'd rather you, thank you.
Don't we need something before the twenty-fifth?
Yes, they're going to.
The deadline is the twenty-seventh.
No, they're gonna prepare the application and hopefully have it ready for us, and we'll anoint and tweak and amend.
We'll have to adopt the resolution, we'll have to do secret stuff.
I'm sure Chris knows all that, right?
Yeah, exactly, and so we will ask them to work, uh, forthwith to accomplish that. Okay, and they're all in favor?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recuse.
You're gonna accuse, thank you, Sarah, okay, good. So that's, that motion does pass. So we are now on three work, last item. So we have two communications of interest. The first, I think I mentioned to you, Hai Ping Wei, who was Dennis's wife, who is, I say that for Bill, so that he knows. She is a retired social worker who has been volunteering with the Red Cross, and if you look at her experience, we have been without a disaster preparedness chair for a while since our former chair developed health-related issues because of Lyme. And so Hai Ping has kindly offered to jump in and be a temporary chair and to get that committee reactivated, because obviously disasters are happening all over the world.
Can you spell her name?
So in Hai Ping, it's in that communication here, Bill, it's HAI dash ping. And she was the first responder, I think, a few weeks ago, actually, when your neighbor's house burnt down. I called her early in the morning after visiting the site, and so she came and worked with Mr. Sanford and, you know, got him some temporary assistance. So you see what her.
So Vinnie Koochow was out?
Yeah, he resigned a couple of years ago.
And Richard is out?
And Richard was not able to do that, he's still willing to be on the committee, but just doesn't have the time to do it. And Hai Ping is now retired, and he's very interested and also wants to make sure our community is well-prepared when we have these issues. So you see her background, she has developed on school safety plans, served on the New York State Education Department, State Schools Task Force, in fact, I think she may have headed that task force. Yeah, so I would like to, but you are all our.
So moved.
Second.
There we go. Yes, exactly, careful what you wish to know. So.
Excuse me one second, so Vincent is.
Vincent is no longer on the committee?
At all.
At all.
So she's going to be the chair?
The chair, but first, before we can make her the chair, so we need to make her a member. So.
So are we gonna put her in Vinnie's term through twenty-eighteen?
Yes, a large community member. There we go. So she would technically, her term would end at the end of this year, but likely we will reappoint her if she's so willing. Well, Sean McLaughlin isn't meeting either, we could put, put her in the twenty-nineteen spot, should we do that?
Did he, that says twenty-seventeen, doesn't it?
Well, yeah, but that's, that's passed.
Oh, right.
So that becomes a twenty-nineteen.
Did he resign too? Oh, okay. Yeah, let's pair that one then.
Okay. So a large community member, number one, replacing Sean McLaughlin, will resign with a two-year appointment ending in twenty-nineteen, and I said move, no, somebody else moved, who was that?
Christine.
Thank you, Christine. Bill, second, as you know. All in favor? All right, thank you very much. The other letter of interest is from Bill Hamel. As you know, our intermunicipal task force has a particular membership that it needs to have on it, and one of those members is a planning board member. Charlie Lang is no longer.
You can make him a village resident.
Exactly, so that's exactly what I was thinking, Bill, thank you very much. On the intermunicipal task force, now that he is a village resident, to appoint Charlie Lang to that, these are all one-year appointments ending in twenty-eighteen, make him ever. These are all one-year appointments ending in twenty eighteen, make him that representative and then make the planning board representative be Bill Hamel. Bill, I think he puts in his letter of interest that he took the Lulu training from Pace University and he's been an active, well, he worked with them on the planning board, would you, would you?
Yeah, I think he'll be great.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, that was fun. Okay, announcements. Right, is that all we have left? That's all we have left, is announcements. So first thing.
So there's no public comment, I can.
So no public comment? Okay, thank you very much.
You don't have any comment, do you?
Okay. So announcements, so one announcement is the church here is conducting, not a happy thing. They are having an event Thursday, August second. I'm talking about now, the Lutheran Church here of Northern Duchess, right here in St. Paul's. Thursday, August second at seven P M. They call it a drug awareness forum, I think that maybe is an aptly named because they're having speakers come to talk to the public about the opioid crisis and what we can do perhaps to try to combat them. So there'll be a list of speakers, I think they're putting together a flyer, you'll see stuff on social media. That's Thursday, August second, seven P M, right here in the village of St. Paul's Parish Hall. My other announcement is going back a little bit. Giulio, if you'd be kind enough to pan over to the big screen here. We'd like to recognize our scouts. So Ally Bud, you all probably know her. She is in addition to a wonderful young lady, also Anne Bud, owner of Taste Bud's daughter. And Ally received her Eagle Scout Award. Her project was creating a library for St. Chris and St. Celia, was a lending library. And she stopped and labeled the library, put together a group of volunteers who created tote bags for students to transport the books to and from the lending library. And so we congratulate Allison on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout Award. We have Ethan Davidson, who by ninth grade achieved his Eagle Scout. I point that out because that's really early to achieve that. And he did some work also at St. Chris. He replaced this beautiful storage shed and a ramp right there behind the school a lot better. And I would encourage you to go see, it's really quite impressive. And so here Ethan is, he's the good looking one, not this one. And those are the scout leaders to the right who have been working for decades, you know, with kids. And if you don't know, we've had more Eagle Scouts in our troop, our local troop here than I think anywhere in the last few years. I know because I don't have a weekend to myself. And it's really so impressive, it shouldn't surprise us, this is red, but we congratulate all of them. We never recognize adults, I don't know why, but one of our local artists, Joel Longnecker, it's hard to say, Longnecker, was announced, just received a New York Council of Public Arts Fellowship Grant Award. And this is not his art, but this is what came with the announcement. And Joel lives in Upper Red Hook, actually, on Gusky Road. And he's a wonderful artist and hopefully he'll take a look at some of his art. But we congratulate him on being one of the recipients for the New York Council of Arts Fellowship Program. That is all I have, does anybody else have anything for this evening?
No.
Okay, thank you all for joining us and hope you stay cool and safe.
Thank you.
Good night.